Call, the call to order the January 27th. Meeting of the Planning Commission, have a roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Lane?
Here.
Commissioner Tenelli?
Here.
Commissioner Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Lerner?
Here.
There you go. Good.
I'm on the phone.
All right.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Narensek, are you on yet? Through the chair, he did just email me that he will be jumping on momentarily, so we do expect him in a few minutes.
All right, good. Well, then, we'll probably, they'll probably get here as we start the public hearing items. Item number two is the public comment section. The public comments are designed for items that aren't on our agenda this time, but you can highlight something for us to look into, or give us feedback on actions that we've taken before, or whatever items that aren't on the agenda. We just like to keep this open so that people get a chance to speak about things that we didn't know about. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public, public hearing for public comments. Is there anyone here to speak on something other than what's on the agenda? And nobody's raising their hand or waving or anything, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section on item two, and then go to item three, the approval of minutes. Now, the only minutes I have are from December 2nd. We don't have the December 28th minutes, or whatever that date was.
Yeah, I didn't see any.
That's correct. The December 28th, 2020 minutes are still being drafted and being reviewed internally by town staff. They will be presented in draft form at your February meeting.
All right, very good. Just want to make sure I didn't get a complete file. All right. I don't, I didn't see anything on the December 2nd meeting. And I guess Nancy and Paul are the only two that are here that could comment on that. Anything that we need to adjust on the minutes?
No, everything looked okay to me.
Nancy, you're good for that?
All right, what?
Yeah, Nancy, you're okay with the minutes from December 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll move that we.
And I'll second. All those in favor say, roll call.
Roll call, yes. Thank you. Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Narensek, can I see you on there?
Yes.
All right. There, you made it.
Commissioner Lamb, you were absent?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
See, so that's an abstention, then.
Abstention.
All right, great. So, Perry, you, did you vote on that, too?
I did.
All right, very good. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and go to item number, item four of the public hearing section. Let me just go over the procedures that we use for all the public items. First thing we do is get an overview from staff. It gives us a little bit of a little color on the, on the information we got in our pocket. And they go over the discussion items. Then I open up the public hearing for public comment. We start with the applicant, and then anyone who would like to speak on the item. And then we close the public hearing, bring it back for action and this, or for discussion and action as appropriate by the commission. So we'll do that on every item, and I'll try to make it clear. And if I see anybody pop on that's new, I'm going to go through the instructions one more time, so everybody's on the same page. All right, with that, I'll start with the, the tree protection zone exception on One Elm Place in Atherton. And Stephanie, can you go, go over the staff overview? Is that, are you the one doing that tonight?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lane. So the request before the commission tonight is for a tree protection zone, or TPZ exception for three heritage redwood trees located at One Elm Place. So the TPZ request is specifically related to accommodate a small first floor addition to an existing one-story main residence. All three of the heritage trees are redwood trees, as I mentioned. Two of them are located in the front yard of the property, closest, closer to the street. While the third is located more on the left front yard side of the house, but also facing the street at Elm Place. So just a brief overview of what a TPZ is, or tree protection zone, which is a measurable distance or buffer area around a heritage tree that is expected to be free of construction or other disturbance activities based on the tree size, unless otherwise allowed in the town's adopted tree preservation guidelines and specification document. In the case of these three heritage trees, the required TPZ for each tree is 10 times the tree's diameter, which equates to a TPC distance of 50 feet for tree number five, one of the trees located in the front yard, 38 feet for tree number six, the second tree located in the front yard, and 43 tree, 43 feet for tree number nine, which is a tree located on the left front side yard. TPZ exceptions are requested down between three and a half to five and a half times the tree's diameters, which result in reduced buffer zones or TPC distances between 16.9 and 23 feet. The property owners have retained the services of a project arborist who prepared a report and did some exploratory digging around these trees to note their existing conditions and applying on any impacts that the proposed construction type would have. All of this was also reviewed, combined with a site inspection by our town arborist. Both arborists have opined that the nature of the construction, combined with the health and root system conditions of all three redwood trees, would be tolerant and would not be negatively impacted. So as further detailed in the staff report, staff is recommending approval of the TPC exception based on the measurable criteria in those heritage tree standards and specification document that I previously mentioned. There is a draft approval certificate that is associated with the recommendation of approval that specifies measures for the trees, trees, plural, I shall say, to be met throughout the construction should approval be granted. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have our town arborist on the call as well.
All right, any questions for staff?
None for me.
Nah, no.
Perry, Perry had a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, we addressed, I think we addressed this issue recently in terms of an amendment, right?
We did. We recently amended the heritage tree standards and specification guidelines document, which did get adopted by the council in January of this year. So those amendments are vetted and adopted policy for the town effective immediately and applicable to this application. So one of the amendments that the commission did vote upon, that the council adopted, was this list of measurable criteria for the commission to use in their decision-making processes for these TPC exceptions. And as noted in the staff report, one of those amended criteria is found to be met on the specifics of this application. Specifically, the criteria that notes if the species is tolerant of construction based on species health, size, and age from the Matheny and Clark, Clark tolerance chart, which is a, I'll say, an arboricultural industry standard document that is used frequently in the assessment of trees.
Okay, and so the question was, the the modification or the new rules adopted by the commission recently are reflected in the staff's recommendation, correct?
Correct.
And specifically, which is, which is the, which is the exception that staff thinks is satisfied here?
It's section 2.2B2, small numeral B, of the guidelines, is what I, what I read, and I can read it again verbatim, which reads, "If the species is tolerant of construction based on species health, size, and age" from the Matheny and Clark tolerance chart.
Okay, and then Eric, one last question of staff. The, the recommendation is based on Sally's opinion?
Correct. The recommendation is based on the town arborist's professional arboricultural opinion and concurrent with her peer review of the project arborist's professional arboricultural opinion.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks, Eric.
All right, great. Any other questions? Anyone else? Right, I don't see anybody, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment section. We'll start with the applicant. Or their representative.
Hi, here. We're the, we're the homeowners at One Elm Place, so thank you for your consideration this evening. Stephanie, I think that was quite eloquent in describing exactly the situation. I would say the only other color I would share about our property is we only are able to push out in front when we're thinking about a small remodel. And we've got our garage on one side, a pool in the back, and a very large oak tree on the other side. So that's why we were considering the remodel.
Any, any questions? I do like the style of the house. It's very, very, very French, commissiois.
Thank you.
We love it.
We love it here.
We love living here. Thank you.
All right, any, anyone else to, to speak on this item? Nobody is just raising a hand or anything. All right, good. Then I will, that, then if there are no other speakers or questions, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. All right.
Go ahead.
Paul, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, Eric, I mean, this all looks pretty straightforward. I always appreciate Sally's input and her professional opinion. And just wanted to, essentially, going through the motions here to put on the record that this is, whether it's a heritage tree removal permit, or a TPZ reduction or exception permit, is nothing that we take lightly. And we always hold the trees in high regard in Atherton. So in looking at that, we turn to the town arborist, and at this time, it's Sally and her professional recommendation. And I always take a look at that, as well as staff recommendation, as far as direction in any of these kinds of items. So while it's not any kind of a rubber stamp, I just wanted on the record that we do take these items seriously, but ultimately, at least I personally always take Sally's professional opinion into, into consideration and hold it in high regard.
I always joke to friends that if you have a choice for safety between being a tree or a person in Atherton, it's safer to be a tree.
Much safer. Especially across El Camino. And this is really, I don't have a problem on, on any of it. I appreciate the outreach and then obviously what staff said and what Sally said as well. So I'm, I have no question. I'm good.
Nancy, Perry, anything?
No, I think Paul spoke very well for me, as well as himself, and I agree. I think it's well done, nicely presented.
Eric, just a quick question. Sally, so Sally, you, just looking at the draft permit, there, there are various conditions here. Do you take it on, upon yourself to follow up on these conditions at the time of execution?
Yeah, so part of the new rules that were approved is that there has to be a monthly arborist report. So as, as part of that report, I'll be looking when they're doing the foundation, I'll be looking for their private arborist to send me photos of the hand digging, and that the trees are getting watered. So that's how I will be following up in that monthly report, and I'll be looking for that.
Okay, and if there's, I guess we'll just assume that all the conditions are being observed and satisfied unless we hear otherwise from you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Okay, great. All right, and I, I agree that the, the review process is warranted. One thing on Sally. One of the things that we tell, again and again, is the whole issue of tobacco with its hand, versus hand digging. And as I, I think I left you a message to this effect on a different issue, was the idea of if tobacco was used as their way, then I'll be there to just sort of check it. I don't have, I'm not looking for anybody to be forced to hand dig, but I, I am looking for if they use it back, what I'm seeing again and again and again, if tobacco shows up, it has a tendency to do the whole, whole thing, regardless of where it is relative to what the original plan of hand digging or not was. So if there's any way that we can sort of bring that up to the arborist when they, when they start digging.
Yes.
All right, with that, well, we're open to motion.
I'm happy to make it. The plan, we should find the exception to the tree protection zone, TPZ, for three heritage redwood trees. Tree number five to three and one half times the diameter. Tree number six to seven times the tree's diameter, and tree number nine to five and one half times the tree's diameter for the property at One Elm Place would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the releases, for the reasons, pardon me, outlined in the staff report, and that the commission approved the TPZ exception at One Elm Place, subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception certificate.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded. Any comments on, on the motion before we vote? All right, then Steph, give us the roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Narensek?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, great. Item 4B is, and I don't see anybody new on the call, so I'll just continue to go without an overview of the instructions. Item 4B is, is the special structures permit 95, at 95 Tallwood Court. And we'll start, as we did last time, with the staff overview, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Jake, you got this one?
Yes, I do. Thank you. The item 4B before you tonight is a request for a special structures permit at 95 Tallwood Court to allow for an accessory building, more specifically, a detached three-car garage to be allowed the same front setback as the main residence. The standard front yard setback for a detached accessory building is either 120 feet from the front property line, or 30 feet behind the front of the main residence, whichever is less. Now, Atherton Municipal Code allows the front setback for accessory buildings to be consistent with the front yard setback of the main residence upon issuance of a special structures permit by the planning commission. The required front yard setback for the main residence for this lot is 60 feet. The project site at 95 Tallwood Court is approximately a 1.75 acre flag lot. The property sits on a slope and is uniquely shaped. It is surrounded on all sides by other low-density single-family houses. The property is developed with the main residence, illegal non-conforming detached garage, illegal non-conforming guest house, and a swimming pool, all of which the applicant intends to demolish. The applicant plans to construct a new main residence, including a new accessory dwelling unit, a new swimming pool, and a new detached three-car garage associated with the request for special structures permit before you tonight. The site is heavily vegetated with 106 onsite trees, 61 of which are heritage trees. The property is considered a flag lot, and the front property line is the southern property line, which is the line shared with the neighbor at the unaddressed parcel with no current main residence shown here on the site plan. Where my hand is motioning now. The applicant requests a detached garage with a proposed front setback of 73 feet, two and a half inches, requiring the special structures permit. All other proposed side and rear setbacks and development standards are complicit with the Atherton Municipal Code. The applicant is requesting the special structures permit primarily because the site is heavily listed with, with the 106 trees, 61 of which are heritage trees. And the applicant further note that all healthy onsite heritage trees are to remain, and majority of the site would be covered, or while keeping all the trees, a majority of the site would be covered by the town's minimum 10x tree protection zone, which significantly reduces the ability for the location of any proposed site developments to be situated without the heritage tree impact, or to be situated without heritage tree impact, and more specifically challenges the construction of garage and driveway to be 120 feet in the front property line, or 30 feet behind the front of the main residence. The existing landscape screening and the site's upslope topography and partially submerged building design, combined with the location of the existing buildings and structures undering properties, will assist to screen these areas of addition from neighboring properties in the public right-of-way. And planning staff finds the proposed garage location will not substantially impact neighboring properties with respect to privacy in view. The town arborist Sally Ben-Stallman has reviewed the project plans and determined, and has determined no heritage trees would be negatively impacted by the construction of the detached garage at the proposed location, and recommends additional screening to be proposed at the front of the lot. The proposed project does not require any heritage tree removal nor tree protection zone exceptions. Planning staff recommends the planning commission approve the request for special structures permit in accordance with the Atherton Municipal Code and the attached conditions of approval based on the findings stated within the staff report. And the notice of the application was mailed to all property owners within a 500-foot radius of the subject property. To date, the town has one public comment in support of the project, which the chair may read into the record. And the applicants also conducted some of their own public outreach. The applicant team is present and available to answer any questions as the staff. And thank you for your time. I yield back to the chair.
All right, great. Thanks, Jake. Yeah, I'll read the, the comments into the, into the, into the record once we open the public comment section after the applicant goes over there. There's. Any questions of staff?
None for me.
None for me.
Very good.
No, I don't either.
All right, Jake, can you pull the map down so we can see everybody?
Yes.
That makes it easier for me to, thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and open the public comment section. We'll start with the applicant or their representative.
Okay, good evening. I'm Robert Swat, Architects, Swat Myers Architects, and I'm here on the line with Phoebe Wong Oliveras, who's a principal in our firm and project architect, and she's on the line as well. And our clients are, and the owners are on, on the line as well, and that's Jay and Joty Daz. And I'm happy to give you an overview of how we arrived at this solution. So if, if staff can turn on the, the first slide that, that we had, and we'll just go through them. So okay, well, okay, so this is the site outlined in red, and, and a few things I'd like to say about it. It is a large site. It's 1.75 acres. And to the left, you can see a swimming pool. To the left of the swimming pool is actually the existing house. It's about 27 or 2,800 square feet. It's under two trees. It actually has two very large and beautiful heritage trees. One is two feet away from the building, and the other is about five feet away from the building. So that's not a building site, unless, you know, with those trees, there's nothing you could build there. When we, it, it's a unique site, as, as staff has mentioned. There are 106 trees on this, on the site, and about 60 heritage trees, and there's also topographies. So the left half of the site has sort of gentle topography. To the right, so the right of the swimming pool is a hillside that goes up, and it's, you know, reasonably steep. And then below the pool is reasonably steep in the opposite direction, actually, it's a downslope. So when we were investigating how we might approach this, the first thing we thought about, well, wouldn't it be nice to place the house at this, close to the base of the hill, but overlooking the only flat area on the site, which is where the pool is. That's the only flat area, so that the house could be in a park-like setting, looking at some level outdoor usable area. And we did a scheme that, that actually reflected that. And if we could go to the next slide, I'll show you that. Thank you. So, so this is a scheme that actually puts the house up into the hill, woven in with the trees, and looking down at sort of this flat area where the swimming pool was. And it was very, very beautiful, and everything was working for this scheme except for one thing, and that is that we had to remove, to make this work, we had to remove 10 of the 60 heritage trees. We actually, after, after we had explored this possible solution, we actually did seven schemes. I'm not going to show you all seven, but I'll show you one more, and before we get to the final one. So the next slide shows a, a scheme where we started to move the building off of the hillside. We rotated it. We put the swimming pool in back of the building, which we didn't think was optimal, because it puts the, the pool in an area that's mostly shaded and mostly has tree leaves that would fall into it. We didn't think it was a great scheme, but we were attempting to save trees. And we did get this down to saving all the trees, except, all the heritage trees, except for four. And then we said, let's go further with this, and we came up with a scheme which we're presenting to you tonight, and that's the next slide. And that was scheme seven, I think. And this, we, we were able to take the plan of the building, and without reducing square footage, make it a more compact plan. And that was by essentially eliminating what was a courtyard, which, which increases the perimeter area of the building and makes the footprint larger. We were able to shrink that down and weave this building into the trees, so that we were able to create the house, the little ADU-type structure, and the pool, and all of that hardscape, and not and not cut down one of the 106 trees. We saved every single tree on that site. The only negative with this was the garage. We didn't have a place to, to put that on, within the site, site plan, where we could set it back 30 feet from the setback, the front setback of the house. So if we go to the next slide, we can see how these two elements sort of align. And so the, the setback line is the red line, sort of at the bottom of the parcel, and that's 60 feet. And the main house is setback, I'm, I'm just guessing right now, it looks like it's about 10 feet or so. And it looks like the, the garage is setback maybe 14 feet or so from the setback line. So it's setback, you know, beyond the setback line, but not 30 feet beyond the setback line. And as staff has mentioned, the, the reason for that is we don't have another place to put this without taking out trees. And we were able to save every tree on the site, including the non-heritage trees as well. So a few, a few things to point out. This is not a typical, you know, suburban type of lot. There's no street in front of it. That would be a major reason why you would want to set the garage back, so that it wouldn't be so prominent as you drive by and see a home. You'd see the home before you see a garage. But no, there's no public view of this area of the site anyway. Nobody can see this. I don't believe anyone can see the garage. I could be wrong on that, but I don't think it's visible. And I think very few people can see very much of the house as well, because it's such a private lot. And we can go to the next lot now. So this shows a few views. So the upper left-hand view is a view down Tallwood Court. Okay, and the, and the view directly to the right of that is a view, on the right side is the actual driveway that goes up into that site. Okay? That's what, that's what that is. And from, from the Tallwood Court, you can't see any buildings on the site at all. That's sort of from the public view. No one can see anything. Then if we go to the bottom left, and you're driving up the driveway, the first, the first portion of the driveway is actually an easement, and from that easement, you don't see the current house. You don't see the current garage. Kind of between the tree, it looks like you might see a roof. But it's not very, you know, obvious that there's really a building there. And then as you go further up the driveway, you can see the current house, and that's the slide on the lower right. Okay, we believe, because you can see where our garage would be, there's an arrow, red arrow there, you can't see it. There's no public view of that garage. I don't think you'll be able to see the house. Maybe you can see the house, but it's a wonderful house, and we hope people, you know, enjoy seeing it, but I don't think it's very prominent. It's very, very private, like park-like setting for the, this lot. So as you drive up the driveway, and you make that left turn, and we're using the same driveway, we're not removing or changing the driveway, it's the same driveway, and we go to the next slide, that's when you're on their property, and you've turned left, you can see the garage. And that's the garage and sort of the foreground on the left side, and that's the house, you know, setback from the, from the garage. And it's about, my guess is about 75 feet away. Probably a 75-foot distance between the two buildings. But again, it's a very private site. It's a very unusual site. I will say this, it's probably the most complicated site I've worked on in many, many years. This was really, really challenging with 106 trees, and the tree protection zone, and the topography, and everything that we were trying to achieve for our clients. Really, really hard project. But challenging projects are the best ones because they lead to creative solutions, and we are incredibly proud of this project, and we hope you will like it, too, and we certainly hope you'll agree with us that this was a really nice solution. And the final slide, as you drive up to the driveway, and you look to the building, that's what you see. And I, I don't think that there's a public view of this building, but that's what you'll see in this park-like setting. So thank you for your patience. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you very much. Very nice overview and great slides.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? From, to Robert?
Not for me.
All right, very good. Anyone else to speak on the item?
No, we just wanted to say we're really proud of, you know, what Bob has created. You know, it was, you know, was not something that we had thought of when we actually bought the property and decided. But, you know, really, really kudos to Bob and Phoebe for putting this together and not, not cutting down any heritage trees.
Or any trees.
Or any trees.
All right, thank you very much. Phoebe, you're all good? All right. She still earns her keep though, right? She works. All right, very good. Then if there are no more comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action as appropriate from the commission.
Through the chair, did you want to read the public comment received?
Oh yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Director.
Well, thank you for reminding me about that. I had it right in front of me. I forgot to do it. And this is a letter from the Henry Hamilton. Lives at 76 Tallwood Court and couldn't be here tonight. Wanted to read, comment on the special structures permit on 95 Tallwood. I fully support the project. Having examined the site plan and illustrations, I think that all the structures, house, garage, ADU will be beautiful additions to our neighborhood. I particularly appreciate the fact that the architect Ms. Wong Oliveras has designed around the trees, creating an abode and harmony and natural landscape. Lastly, I must say the absence of a wall and gate structure wore my heart. I mean, that sincerely, I see it evidence, as evidence of a genuine neighborly spirit that see lacking in Atherton of Lake. And that was from Leah Hamilton. That's the only, that's the only letter I have at this point. Correct, Jake? There's nothing else, right?
That is correct.
All right, good. Then we can have discussion and action as appropriate. Anyone want to kick it off?
I'll kick it off, Eric. So first of all, to Phoebe and Robert. Just totally impressive, the effort and the design. And a heartfelt thank you for considering the trees and just Bravo for everything you've done and the effort you've gone through. This is my opinion in looking at this project and the difficulties with the terrain and the trees that you had to work around and the effort that you put in to coming up with a creative solution is just one of the most impressive things I've seen in the time that I've been on the planning commission. So thank you so much for your consideration to the town and the terrain and the neighbors. And it's evident in the letter that was received by the neighbors at 76 Tallwood and how enthusiastically they endorse the project. It's just overall, just I'm kind of getting goosebumps at the work you put into this. But thank you very much. And I just think it's just totally impressive what you've done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is Randy. I would agree with that. That was, it's rare we get to see a site that has 100-plus trees on it and so little being requested of us and lots of effort on your part to make the site work. So congrats. The house looks really cool, too.
Oh, this is fantastic.
Yeah.
Perry, anything?
Yeah, I echo all of that. Beautiful project.
Nancy?
Yeah, once again, Paul has said it well for all of us, I think. And I second the motion. That's great.
Yeah, absolutely. Frank Lloyd Wright would be happy with you both. Also, I apologize for getting in the way of your gardener when I was parked in the driveway when he drove up. But it's a very, it's a very unique site and extremely well thought through. And I really appreciate the presentation where you stepped us through the whole thinking process. That's also missing in a lot of the presentations we have. So that was very helpful. With that, look for a motion.
I'll move that the planning commission approved the special structures permit at 95 Tallwood Court. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft, special structures permit to allow the location of a detached accessory building, three-car garage, to have the same front yard setback as the main dwelling.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Randy seconds, okay. Great, then any discussion on the motion before we vote?
Not for me.
No.
All right, great, then Stephanie, can you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairline?
Yes.
Commissioner Chelley?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Hey Randy?
Commissioner Lamb?
He might have just faded out. You there, Randy?
Yep, sorry, I lost you on my Bluetooth. Yes.
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 Did you vote?
We're taking vote, Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
And Commissioner Narensek?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, have fun with the project and we'll look forward to seeing it when it's done.
And a really terrific.
I know you're going to have a great housewarming, so we'll see you there. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, next item, item 4C is a variance at 196 Patricia Drive. And as we've done in the previous items, we'll go ahead with a, an overview from staff and then we'll hear from the applicant and anyone.
Thank you, Chairline.
Anyone else want to speak? All right, yes.
Yeah, could you please pull up the aerial image? Thank you. So good evening, Commission. Tonight you are considering a variance request to allow for a 45-foot front yard setback for a main residence at 196 Patricia Drive. The image that you see here on the screen outlined in red is the parcel. Under consideration tonight, I put this up to give context of the shape of the parcel, which I'll discuss further, as well as its situation within the existing neighborhood. It's hard, a little bit hard to read, at least on my end. There is a 25-foot roadway easement that also burdens the property. That's what that red text to the left of the triangular-shaped outline reads and little arrows that kind of depict that 25-foot distance. Again, I'll be speaking more to that momentarily. So the property itself currently contains a main residence, a poolhouse and a swimming pool, all of which are proposed to be removed in a full new site redevelopment. So as the property owner explores future main resident configurations, they have subsequently requested a lesser front yard setback due to conditions of the lot and its surroundings. So Jake, if you could go to figure two, please, of the staff report. So first I'd like to describe a bit more about the lot itself. As you saw in the prior image, it is triangular-shaped lot with a long curved front property line along Patricia Drive. Directly across from the property is a landscaped median island that is maintained by the town. You can see a portion of that landscaped island on the screen to the left with the green text that reads vegetated, vegetated street island. There is a 25-foot roadway easement that burdens the property. The 25-foot roadway easement begins its measurement from the center line of the street, 25 feet back towards the interior of the property. That 25-foot roadway easement is shown on the screen in red. It's further noted, however, that the back edge of the actual street pavement itself is 15 feet back into the property line. And that 15-foot distance is noted on the screen there in blue. Given the depth of this lot, as it's measured in accordance to the definitions of the zoning code, a 60-foot front yard setback would be required. It is noted that the existing main residence is legal non-conforming with a 53 to 55-foot front yard setback under current conditions. The applicants have prepared a very detailed narrative of their variance request, which is part of the staff report attachments. The staff report further evaluates each of the points of the applicant's request. But in summary, the applicant is requesting the variance for five primary reasons. The first reason is given the triangular shape of the lot and the allowed main buildable area that is adversely reduced given that triangular configuration. The second reason, also due to the triangular shape of the lot and the resulting main buildable area shape, which results in a unique buildable area that presents more hardships and challenges in a main residence design. The third reason is given the triangular shape of the lot, a much larger front yard area results relative to a subsequent rear yard area, given the lack of an actual rear property line, as again, because of the triangular shape, the two sides converge into each other, unlike a more traditional rectangular-shaped lot. The fourth reason is that there is an existing growth of heritage trees, both at the rear and to the side of the property, that further restrict otherwise allowable buildable area unless subsequent heritage tree removals and/or TPC exceptions were potentially explored. And lastly, by proposing to request a reduced front yard setback as opposed to a reduction in either the side and or rear yard, the applicants believe that lesser impact to the surrounding neighbors may result in conceptual site design. The town arborist has reviewed the reduced front yard setback request and has determined that no impacts to existing heritage trees would result. And any development of formal future plans would of course need to adhere to the minimum tree protection zone standards that may be applicable. Regular notice was sent for this item and to date, staff has not received any items of public correspondence. The property owners also did conduct their own public outreach and the feedback given to staff was that all neighbors that were contacted were amenable and favorable to the proposed reduced yard, front yard setback, I should specify. In order to grant a variance, the planning commission must make all four of the required findings that are listed in the staff report. So in summary, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the variance and does have the ability to make all four of these required findings. Due to the site constraints that result from the unique pie-shaped triangular lot configuration, combined with that 25-foot roadway easement, the existing vegetated street median and existing onsite heritage trees that do create a unique condition at this lot. Before I open it up to any questions, I do want to make mention of a memorandum that is recommending, should the planning commission approve the application, that some editorial amendments be made to attachment one, which is the draft variance certificate itself. Through the chair, if I may, read into the record what those recommended textual changes are, please. It would be for condition number one. Right now, the condition reads, "Construction of the garage shall be in substantial compliance with the plans prepared by Godby Construction dated November 20th and as reviewed by the planning commission at its January 21st, 2021 meeting. Any substantive changes to the plans shall be reviewed by the planning commission." The recommended change is in the first sentence. It is recommended to read "construction of the main residence" and strike the word garage. The second recommended change is for condition number two, and this is to add text to this condition. I will read it. The variance is limited to the location of the proposed main residence. Following that, staff is recommending we add the words "front yard setback" as shown on the plan sheet A2 prepared by Godby Construction dated November 2020 and does not establish a setback for future additions to the residence. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. I see that the property owner and the architect are here on the call as well.
All right, Jake, can you give us full screen again? Thank you. All right, any questions of Stephanie before we open up the public hearing?
Not for me.
No, not for me.
Stephanie, I had a quick question. It is, does the, I didn't see a view of the current property with a footprint of the new proposed property over it. Is there one that I, that has that or not?
With the proposed setback delineation?
Yeah, yeah, or the, is there, there's no proposed, there's no proposed footprint for the future property, is there?
There is.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for a comparison of where they, where it is versus where it's going to be.
Oh, an overlay. No, not on top of each other, but Jake, if you could pull up attachment. Let's see here. Read my numbers. We can bounce back and forth, if you will. Attachment three, Jake, if you could pull up that, please. This depicts existing conditions, so it shows the footprint of the main house.
That's what I was doing too. I was bouncing between the two. I didn't know if there was one that I was missing, but I have them both.
No.
Which attachment or sheet are you referring to?
Attachment three. That's it. I can't see. Maybe make it a.
Okay, so here we go.
All right, well, that's my question. There isn't one with.
Well, that one, this one here will give you a general sense. I'm sorry, the owner, that shows a proposed setback that we would like overlaid on top of the existing.
All right, I'll wait until I open the public hearing, but you can walk that, so I can get that question answered when we open the public hearing. All right, that's going to be one question I'll have, and I'll have one more of the applicant. All right, any other questions to staff before I open up public hearing?
No.
Okay, good. Then I'll go ahead and open up public comment and Val, I guess you got the floor.
Okay, great. You can hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm here with Mark Godby, the architect. And first of all, thanks for Stephanie for putting all the documentation together. It really looks, she did a nice job and thanks for hearing my request. Let's see, for the most part, I thought the, what's, was put forth in front of you did a good job of running through everything. But I can just kind of, at a high level, reiterate a couple of things that are already found in the report. So looking at this document, this is our proposed setback that we would like. And everything was really based upon, you know, looking at the numbers of, we did a couple of different studies. We did a study of both rectangular and square lots, which are most of the lots in the town of Atherton. And we looked at different width lots to get a general sense of, you know, the buildable footprint that is available. And then also the front yard setback. And what we found was is that on average, there's about 7,577 square feet of buildable available on a typical lot in Atherton. And the, if you go to a 60-foot setback, what you end up with is 5,029 square feet of buildable. If you go to the 45-foot setback that we're asking for, you get to 7,200, which is still under the average. And then we also looked at if you were to go to a 35-foot setback, which would be a 60-foot setback actually from the property line, but we have this 25-foot easement. And if you were to go to that, you would get it 88,000 square feet in buildable. And so what we were ultimately looking for is something that's comparable to what an average lot would have, so we could at least start from there for getting a footprint. The, what you're looking at here is existing house overlaid on our, what we would like is a proposed setback. And so right now, the existing house is at 53-foot, one and one-eighth inch. And we would like to go to 45, so basically getting another about seven feet from, you know, currently where it is. And Jake, if you're able to go to A2, which is, which is this diagram? So, so at 45 feet, what you end up with is 7,200 square feet of buildable relative to 7,500 for a typical lot. Then when you, in addition, when you take into the account that it's a triangular shape. Then, when you, in addition, when you take into the account that it's a triangular shaped lot, that, that further prohibits you from building, you're building square walls on, on a, on a triangular lot. And so, you know, we, we, so this is the one that, out of the three that we looked at, that seemed to make the most sense. As you can see in the rear yard, we've got heritage trees and also on the, on the right side or the, the east side, we have heritage trees. So we, you know, we, with a pool and, and a house, you know, this is the point at which it, it fit onto the lot pretty well. Now, the other thing is with pie-shaped lots is, the, I mean, as you're, you're familiar with, the way the zoning code looks is that you look for the, the front yard width from the, the front yard line and then the depth from the, the middle point. And so this is, it, it creates really a punitive situation for pie-shaped lots because the widest point is the front and it goes to zero at the back. And the, and then on the same in the, in the middle, the deepest points on the middle, and then it gets narrower as you go to the sides. So when you take the widest and the deepest points for zoning and then you apply it to this lot, you end up with a, a small buildable footprint. And, and that's what makes it challenging. So, I mean, we looked at three different scenarios. We felt like this did a good job of getting us away from the heritage trees and still allowing us to, to build a, a, a nice sized house. And then we're not, you know, we're not affecting any of the trees anywhere else, you know, on the lot. And matter of fact, we'll end up doing some additional screening as well. And the, as I was mentioning, on the pie-shaped lots. So on a, on an average pie-shaped lot, you end up with a, you end up with 9,733 square.
Hold on, I, I don't think the average is going to be meaningful to us, so let's just stay on this property itself.
Okay.
Anything else you want to highlight?
Yeah, so this particular, so at this point, at 45 feet, the front yard setback or the front yard area is 13,580 square feet. And so the, I just, it's a, it's a, it's a large area. So the pie-shaped lots, they are just skewed to having a very large front yard area. So when we looked at the options of moving to the side, we decided coming to the front made the most sense because there's a lot of front yard area in conjunction with the fact that we have the, the medium in, right in front of the house, which further blocks the house from the neighbors and the public right away. And, and that's how we concluded that, you know, this was the best option.
Are you flipping the location of the garage from where it is now to the other side of the house?
Currently, the garage is on the left-hand side and now we're proposing on the right side.
Yeah, so, so that was one question I had about the ingress and egress relative to what it is right now. Where does the driveway come out onto the street in the proposal?
Right now, if you go.
I know where it is now, but where are you talking about?
So on the proposal, we would, we would propose to have it come more in line with where the, the turning of the, the street is. Right now, it's, it's a little bit of a hazard because you come out and you have to make a quick left and then a right if you want to get onto Serrano. And so we would make it more in line with the, the curvature of the street, so you're coming in between the trees. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to, when I saw the property, I was looking at, it's, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So you would enter it on the right side there so you could get into the garage?
Yeah. All right, anything else then? Do you want to highlight?
I don't believe so. Mark, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
I would just like to say, I'm Mark Godby. I helped Paul with this and taking a really good look at it. And we looked at several ways trying to come to a conclusion of what made sense on this lot. And when we looked at the depth of the lot, and we, we drew those three lines that show us the depth. We looked at it at both edges of the building envelope and down the center at the deep portion of the lot. And when we averaged the length of those three lines, we came up with a depth. When we applied the formula, the town formula for what would become the front setback, it became just over 44 feet, 44.1. And then when we looked at some of the areas of what the actual area is on the front setback and also the area of the building envelope, when we tried to just approach the areas that might be on similar size lots, the 45-foot number fell right in line with that for us. But I think the, the real third confirmation of this as being the right number is, when you look at the distance from the edge of the roadway to the front of what would be the proposed residence, it's still 60 feet. It's a full 60 feet. And I think that just confirms it in, in three ways that I, I think this is right in the sweet spot, this 45-foot proposed setback. Also, when we looked at the vegetated island across the street and the roadways and how there is no direct neighbor's home, pretty much, you know, looking directly on this parcel. And we see how well screened this parcel is at its front on, on its own property. And then in turn, we look at the neighbors at the sides and, and the rear. And then looking at all the areas of the yard and the envelope and then looking at the heritage trees at the rear, it just made sense to bring this forward rather than to crowd the neighbors at the sides and rear, so.
All right, thank you. All right, any questions from the, from the commission?
No.
None for me.
All right.
No.
All right, Jake, can you take us down and return us to full screen? Does anyone else like to speak on this item? I'm not seeing anybody, there's nobody to wave, but I have not seen anybody come off of mute. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. Any, anybody want to kick it off? Paul, you want to start this one too?
I, I have no comments right now.
All right.
Yeah, this is Randy. I don't either. I'm fine with it.
Yeah. I, the only question I have, is it a one-story building or a two that's being proposed?
I believe it's one, but if we could let the applicant speak to confirm that.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing and go in again officially one more time. Is it a one-story building or a two?
Yeah, it will be a two-story building.
That's what I thought. Okay, all right, so go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, so my, so my, my only comment would be that's going to change the impact of that, of, of that effect of that being closer. Just because the different setback and the more height will be more, more, the neighborhood will be more aware of it than they are right now with the one story that's there. So that would be my only, my only, whatever mitigation of screening or whatever would be appropriate. And also, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm a little confused about the design of that intersection anyway. Because when I went into it, I went, well, do I turn left here and, or do I go around the, around the island? So I went around the island and then I decided, decided they were both the two-directional. So I went, oh, this doesn't make any sense to me at all. So I'm, I'm confused by the setup in general, not, not the, the property owner's fault, but it just seemed a little bit odd to me. But I'm, but I would want to make sure, Stephanie, from a standpoint of traffic flow, that the driveway coming out, it would be a, a good safe spot. Because all spots around that corner have a tendency to have people generating speed to turn, to turn, so. The idea that it would be come out earlier than people are used to could create a problem early on. People are sort of like waiting for those, beyond the house to be ready for a car to come out. And if it's all of a sudden on the other side, they're going to go, wait a minute. That surprises me. So it's just something that to be thinking about when we, when it's built. But I have no other, I have no other comments. I understand that the reason for the setback, it's very unique a lot and it makes sense to me. I just think it's going to, as a two-story property, the setback's going to be more noticeable than current, the current home.
If I, through the chair, here, one comment on that. There is a limitation, although the, the planning commission is not providing any kind of zoning clearance on any future development of a main residence. The request is limited to establishment of a front yard setback only. There is an associated zoning development standard that limits the size of a second story relative to the lot area or to its maximum floor area ratio, I should specify, at seven and a half percent. So whether that design is going to result in flush walls, if you will, at the first and second story, or whether it would be inset or offset a bit from the first floor footprint below, it would need to in some capacity because the size could not mirror the same footprint or square footage as the first floor under the regulations. It would need to be much smaller.
All right, that's good, that's good, that's good input. All right, any other comments? Perry?
Not for me.
None for me.
Nancy?
No, everything's been covered quite nicely, I think.
Okay. All right, great. Then ready for a motion? Randy, you want to do this one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Perry's ready?
No, 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 no. I haven't done it a lot.
Go ahead.
Perry?
Just kidding. Okay, so this is, this is Perry and I move that the planning commission approve the variance at 196 Patricia Drive, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft variance certificate, to allow the front setback for the main residence to be 45 feet for the reasons enumerated in the staff report and with the conditions stated in the variance certificate.
I'll second.
All right, Randy, seconds. All right, any comments before we move on the, or vote on the motion?
No.
Through the chair, if, if that motion could also be amended to conclude with the recommendations to the revisions to attachment one variance certificate as distributed to the planning commission and as read into the public record.
With the two items that were edits for that Stephanie brought up in the beginning of the meeting, Perry, is that okay for your motion?
I'm not sure if I could restate it, but whatever she said, yes.
Well, with the, with the edits as presented on the document that was presented today.
Okay, do you want me to restate the motion or just stipulate?
I want to make sure you agree to those edits.
I, I will stipulate to those edits, yes.
Okay, great. Randy, you okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
All right, great. So then we're ready for roll call.
Thank you. Caroline?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Narancik?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very, very good. Good luck with the property.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we go to item number five, staff report. Stephanie, what do you got for us? Or, or Jake?
I have an item or two. Just something that will be in the planning commission's pipeline in the next month or two. We staff were directed by the council to bring forward an item for their discussion and consideration, which has to do with landscape screening for detached accessory buildings on sloped lots. The whole catalyst of the topic was brought forth because there had been some concerns expressed to various council members and to our town arborists primarily from downslope neighbors who are looking uphill to detached accessory buildings and structures that only from a setback perspective need to be situated 10 feet off that shared property line. So at a lower elevation, when you're looking uphill, even though that building complies with the zoning standards for height and setback, it could visually appear much bigger in mass and structure. So this, the topic was brought for discussion to the council with direction back to staff to bring forward to the planning commission as a study session, to be, study session item to begin with, some alternative means of either amendments to the zoning ordinance or other mitigations to help alleviate those concerns in the future. So we will be working on that and be bringing that back to the planning commission, I would anticipate, in March.
Yeah, on a previous planning commission, we had a, we had, we had in a different, different area. I, we were, we approved a hillside ordinance that required a setback so that you, the angle off the hill determined the view. And then that, that adjusted the setback of the, of the unit so that you couldn't see the property. It was a hillside protection ordinance, so basically it still looked like a hill rather than house on the top of the hill. That would be the type of thing that we're talking about.
The only, the only direction, specific direction that the council gave consensus on is that whatever such amendments or revisions or policy directive changes are proposed, that, that did not result in any type of design review to just stay consistent with how practice and policy is currently undertaken within the town.
Right, right. What's the second item?
I had been reporting to the commission sort of updates on the leaf blower ordinance. So just for reference, it got continued for consideration at the last January meeting. And ultimately, the council decided to not make any changes to the regulations regarding any additional restrictions in the use of leaf blowers, but did direct staff to start with some additional kind of public outreach and education on the differences between gas and electric leaf blowers, resources, et cetera. So we will be working on that as well.
All right, any update on the, from our last special meeting? Any, any outcome from that to the commission, to the town council?
The city, yes, thank you. So that was the last one. And the city council did approve the conditional use permits to allow temporary lighting both at both schools, Sacred Heart and Menlo. And the 10-day right of appeal did pass and no appeal was filed, so.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. All right, Jake, Jake told me that he had like seven items that he wanted to go over.
One night.
I have no items. Thank you.
Shoot. All right, good. All right, then we'll go on. That's it for the staff report then, Stephanie?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right, good. Then we'll go to the commission reports. Anything?
No.
Not for me.
The only thing I'll bring up that I did have a situation where there was another backhoe used in the wrong spot, happened to be close to me. And I, I talked to Sally about the idea of whether or not we could. What's happening is that nobody wants to, to shovel dig. Nobody wants to do hand digging. And so what, what we've seen repeatedly is when somebody brings a backhoe in, they use it. And they use, they look at the area that's going to be cut out and in this area, it was a pad that was supposed to be done and, you know, eight inches or 10 inches was supposed to be cut into the dirt, and they just started doing it. And they were very, they're under very direct instructions to use hand digging and they didn't. And this is like the second time on this one property and it's happened on multiple other properties. So it, the reality of it is, is people aren't used to hand digging. You know, they use the backhoe and they just do it. So I've talked to Sally about the idea of, of looking to the idea of coming up with a way that we could allow a backhoe, but with a, with a contract arborist there, you know, or some, some other process where the applicant would pay for one of our contract arborists, so someone that we would, not, not Sally, but maybe it's someone that she would contract with, to go and observe how it was being done. Because it's clear to me that this sort of hand digging initiative isn't working. It's, it's, we've, we've seen three or four on the commission that we've gotten feedback about it and I've seen two next door to me. So just, I just want to bring it up so everybody knew at least, ask her about that.
Hey, Eric, and I'll just add in, in reference to our, our, our last meeting regarding the temporary lights at, at Menlo and Sacred Heart and just kind of paying attention to the sunset hours and, and I know it was brought up during the meeting, but just in a realistic sense, taking a look at the angles and things now. We're two weeks, this is halfway through our second weekend of the temporary lights. And realistically, we're looking at, right now, 5:15. I've been kind of paying attention to when darkness starts to set in and, and having coached high school sports when the darkness gets to be a little bit iffy. But right now, I think you could realistically say you wouldn't have to turn on the lights until about 5:15. And we were talking about last week going until 6:30. So it's just been my observation, after two weeks of this, which the third week will start Monday, it'll be essentially an hour that they have the temporary lights up. So I think we did the right thing in the last meeting because just two weeks into it, we're looking pretty much at a window of 5:30 to 6:30 where they have the temporary lights. And I just think it was important to, you know, give the, the students a little more time to get out there and recreate, especially after what we've gone through over the last eight or nine months. But realistically, I think it was pretty much a no-brainer.
Well, well said.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, have you guys heard any feedback on the, the garbage swap process, the garbage can process swap yet?
We had to wait a little while, but every. We had to wait a little while, but everything's fine.
Yeah, we had to wait a little while too, but they were, they were going through the neighborhood with their stacks of stuff hitting trees. They didn't realize how tall the tree, how low the trees are. Their trucks are, their trucks are bigger than the previous company, so they, they're, they're used, they're getting used to the, the neighborhood that they're driving through. I think they've been used to areas that don't have a lot of overhanging trees and wider streets because they're, all their trucks look a, a lot oversized.
They didn't take out any palm trees, did they?
No, because all ours are high enough, that's right. Then I would have really been upset.
Only the eucalyptus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been paying for all the eucalyptus.
Yeah. All right, that's, that's about all of, I want to, just real quick, I just want to make sure you all understand that I'm, that I'm interested in making sure that the meetings are, you know, as structured and flexible as they can be. So in the last time, there was a question about timing and things like that. I want you to know that what, one of my concerns and maybe the history of me is that I've seen that when the, the more contested an issue is, the more people sort of come with the assumption that we're not, we've already made up our mind. And when they walk in and not used to public meetings and not used to speaking in public and sort of looking at a staff report, thinking the staff report's already made the decision and we're on the staff's side, they're assuming we don't listen and I, I know we listen all the time and I know we incorporate the feedback from people present. So I kind of go out of my way to make sure that they, they know they are being heard. Even if we come up with a decision that they don't agree with from the beginning, if they feel like we actually understood the issue, listened to them and considered it, they have a tendency to be more comfortable with the, the way the process works. And, and there's so much sort of negative about government and, you know, assumption about government doing the wrong thing. I, I really want this commission to get credit for the, the openness and the thinking that we put into it. And that's why you see me be as, as structured, flexible as possible because I've seen overly structured meeting go crazy and people go nuts. And I've seen overly flexible meetings where people just run, run around the, the meeting like it's a balloon that's loose in the room. So I just want you to know that I'll always dial it in. One other thing you'll see me do is that sometimes if the applicant hasn't spoken yet, if the public hearing hasn't spoken yet, I'm trying to always ask questions so that we wait for our opinion to be said until after the public hearing. And the reason for that is if we state our, our favoritism or negativism about an issue, then they assume we're not listening. And I just want to make sure that we, that we're always, get credit for this commission's ability to listen. And that you'll see me try to guide a meeting in that direction. So I just wanted to clarify something about it. And if, and if you want me to dial it, dial, dial back the original, I can do that or dial, dial the flexibility, but I want you to know that I'm trying to make sure that, that the, that the neighbors feel like we're being a, a part of the neighborhood rather than, you know, dictating the government to them.
Good.
Right.
No, that's great. Good.
All right.
With that professional haircut you have now, there is no doubt about it. I want to commend you on that haircut. I swear, I almost didn't recognize you when I got on the line. I was like, who the hell is running this thing?
You know, you know, I, and I spent all of twenty-three bucks on it too, so you know, I went all out. All right, anything else, anything else?
That's more than Paul spent.
Very, what did it say?
I said that twenty-three bucks is more than Paul spent.
More than I've spent in fifteen years.
All right, item number seven, which is always a controversial one, I need a motion to adjourn. I move, I move you adjourn. Is there a second?
Nancy, you want a second?
Sure, a second.
Nancy seconds. All right, Stephanie, I need a roll call because we can't do it by voice anymore.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Tenelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Narensek?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good, everyone. Have a good, have a good Valentine's Day.
Night too.
Happy Valentine's Day. Bye-bye.